Oh, Miami Township. That's me and the pedestrian walk.
Oh, now it is. There you are. The project should not increase or decrease your property value, so no specific beneficial or detrimental impact on your, I don't even know what that word is. Secure. And then I'll be stupid. And then she said, second, I'm not prohibited from voting on one condition that provides a benefit to all residents or a large portion of our property. Road preparedness market will benefit all residents who drive on, who drive on East Market, not just the people.
If you're comfortable voting for it, I wouldn't.
Well, I took it last week, man. It was my company and he was looking for.
That was my question today. Really? She doesn't.
That'll kill you as fast as water.
It's been dying for a couple of years.
Oh, I thought you said her dad. Stop. I already know that part.
That's different.
That's different.
Who's we can decide? I haven't on air light yet.
We didn't pray.
What?
Sorry.
Come on, Mike, what's Mike praying with us?
Mike don't pray with us.
All right, folks, if you got your cell phones, please put them on silent. We're just waiting for our on-air light here when we get started. There we go. Well, welcome everyone to the Xenia City Council meeting, and we're going to start off with a time of prayer here with Pastor Mike Wicklin from Xenia United Presbyterian Church. Mike, come forward. I'll just ask everybody, could you please rise for the invitation?
Thank you, friends. I have the privilege of serving Xenia United, where we do our best to be united in service and in worship and in faith. I'll pray from my tradition and invite you to pray from yours. Creator God, giver of life, the source of strength and the hope of our tomorrows, we open ourselves to your presence in this moment of possibility for our community. We offer you thanks and praise that you have raised up these servant leaders to call forth the best in us and to make decisions regarding our common resources amidst so many competing demands. We're grateful for their energies and their wisdom, as well as for the sacrifice their families make, so they can perform this service for all families of our community. You have plans for us, Almighty God, and the power to make them happen. Give those who meet this evening a knowledge of your will for our city. Let them remember that they serve a public trust beyond personal gain or glory, and have a special responsibility for those dwelling on the margins of life. These things we pray to you as our creator and in remembrance of our ancestors, who, depending upon your providence, pledge to one another their lives, their fortunes, and their sacred honor in defense of the rights that come, not from human hands, but from you, as it was in the beginning, is now, and ever shall be. World without end. Amen.
Amen. Now, I'll have Councilman Dean will lead us in the question.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May be seated. All right, at this time on a call or meeting order, let's go ahead and start with roll call.
Vice President Smith?
Here.
Councilman Scrivens?
Here.
Councilwoman Dean?
Here.
Councilman Brannum?
Here.
Councilman Dean?
Here.
Mayor Mays?
Here.
President Urschel?
Here.
Next item on our agenda is the approval of minutes from our July 27, 2023 meeting. Do I have a motion? Moved by Councilman Scrivens. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Councilman Dean. Any comments or discussion before we vote on this? All right, let's call the vote.
Vice President Smith?
Abstain.
Councilman Scrivens?
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean?
Abstain.
Councilman Brannum?
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean?
Aye.
Mayor Mays?
Aye.
President Urschel?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Great, thank you. We have no special presentations for this evening. At this time, we have an opportunity for audience comments. Anyone would like to come and address the council, please come up to the podium, state your name and your address, and you have an opportunity to share your thoughts with the council. Okay. Not noted here? Did we have any email?
No, sir.
No, okay, great. All right, next item, we'll go to old business. The first item is ordinance 2023-22. This is a public hearing tonight before we vote on that. This is amending sections 45.01, 45.06, 45.1, 45, 452.08, and 452.10 of Title VIII, parking of the Xenia City Traffic Code. This was introduced at the last meeting by Councilman Scrivens. And, yes, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Mr. President, I'd like to move for passage.
Great, thank you so much. Do I have a second on that?
I'll second.
You have a second? Great. Mr. State Manager, any comments before we open the public hearing?
Yes, sir. Just a reminder of some of the key provisions in this legislation. This would bring our code current with changes that have been made in the Ohio Revised Code, so there's no conflict between the two. Also incorporates some nomenclature changes in terms of what we've known as handicap parking and changing those references to persons with disability and accessible parking. Finally, it makes some additional changes that would prohibit large oversized vehicles that don't conform to road within our neighborhoods and add some sections to the code relative to that.
Great, thank you. All right, at this time, I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing. If you have any comments either in favor of or against or just observations on this ordinance, please come forward, state your name and your address, and we'll share with the council. Okay, we have no comments, so I'm calling the public hearing closed at this time. We have a motion and a second on the table. Do we have any other comments or observations from council before we vote?
I do have one question.
Sure.
When it comes to the individual box trucks, travel trailer for recreational vehicles, motorhomes, is it going to be an effort that's going to be like, hey, we're having police officers, city staff drive around, and they're going to enforce that? Or is it going to be based upon, you know, complaints that we receive of excessive people? Because, for instance, I just, the only thing that kind of comes to mind, if you have a truck driver that drove all night and they go home and they park their semi on the side of the truck and the neighbors don't have any problem with it, I don't see a big problem. But then if you've got somebody that's just doing it to do it, and of course, happens even on my street, you know, and I know that there's other neighbors that's been aggravated about it, but I'm just kind of curious of what, what's going to determine the enforcement of that.
Yeah, typically, for this type of thing, it is a complaint-driven process, not exclusively, but typically, you know, given priorities of the Xenia Police Division, there are a lot more pressing matters. So if we get repeated calls, obviously, we'll send an officer out to address it. Otherwise, you know, there may be, you know, there are times, for example, this summer, we've been doing an aggressive junk vehicle, a task force across the city. So that might be an occasion where officers would be out with the intent of looking at potential violations that it might be observed. But to be honest, Councilman, I can't imagine that we would be intentionally sending our officers up and down streets looking for this sort of thing. We just have too many, too much call volume with much higher priority calls.
Okay, thanks. Any other comments or questions before we vote?
Just one, Mr. President.
Sure, go ahead. Councilman Scrivens.
Junk vehicles is not specifically stipulated in this resolution, I don't believe.
Correct, and I can respond to that. I just referenced that as an, as an example. In this particular legislation, it's specifically related to really large oversized vehicles, you know, industrial-sized trucks, semis, RVs, things of that nature that because of their length and width on residential streets to be parked pose a safety problem for the passage of traffic.
I think we already have ordinances for unlicensed or unoperable vehicles.
I will say there are some changes that we may need to make to some of those. We've found as we've gone out that there are some difficulties in, in what we can and can't enforce. So there's a potential on the junk vehicle issue, we may in the future need to come back with some changes as well.
Just wanted to make sure you knew this.
Sure.
Thank you, sir.
Any other comments? Okay, let's call the vote.
Vice President Smith?
Aye.
Councilman Scrivens?
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean?
Aye.
Councilman Brannum?
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean?
Aye.
Mayor Mays?
Aye.
President Urschel?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Great. Next item is also a public hearing. This is ordinance 2023-23, approving a major change to the concept plan for the 11.396 acre planned unit development at 441, 457, and 469 Dayton Avenue. This also was introduced by Councilman Scrivens at our last council meeting. I'd like to go ahead and open a public hearing at this time, and if you have any comments either for, against, or just observations on this ordinance, please feel free to come at this time to address the city council. Just state your name and address and go ahead and, and give us your comments.
So, I just have an interest because I have.
Oh, name it, name it at us first.
Oh, sorry, Angela Wilson.
You're okay, you're all right, sure.
935 Booker Drive, Willoughby, Ohio.
No name to it.
Did I get it?
Angela Wilson.
Angela Wilson, got it, thanks Angela.
That's what she is.
Yeah. Okay, so I don't really, I just seen this and I just seen the surveyors over there surveying the land, and I just pretty much asked them what was going on. My interest, I don't own the building that I'm in, I just lease it, okay? So, but I do have a lot of kids that are in that area. So I'm always concerned about what's going on going over there. Seems like a pretty good project, but I guess that's to be seen. So I was looking at the plans and Will gave me these plans, this is the first time I've seen them. I'm just concerned about how you got two different options here, I guess, that they're providing. But it seems like one of the options over here is that they're going to enclose the entire building where you're not going to be able to see the building. And I'm not speaking for community action, I'm only speaking for my parents who drive in and out, you know? So I just want to know, you know, I mean, has this, has it been, is it final or is it still open for discussion? Like you said, nothing's been really voted on about this?
Will be soon.
Okay.
Yeah, go ahead, I got the.
I'm sure mine is valid, so take care of it.
Yeah, less of the planning and zoning, so that it was.
Normally, we don't answer when an audience member comes up, but that's a great question. Unless I'm wrong in our planning, manager is behind us here. There was two different proposals presented, the planning and zoning, and that is dependent on the owner of the land there, if they decide to do a land swap.
Yeah.
So if there's a land swap, you'll see.
The land swap, yeah.
Exhibit one. If there's not, then it'll be exhibit two.
Okay. So the company that is representing the, the building, are they available to talk here today about what type of condos are going to be built there and what type of, how much is it going to cost and who is it going to attract? You know, I think about all those things, you know, because I've been over there for over eight years, so I see everything that goes over there. So I'm just wondering, yeah, I guess, has that been presented yet as to what type of condos are going to be built?
They've been in the drawings.
And I guess the, the income, but you know, what is the income that they're going to be looking at?
Okay.
Target population, I should say?
Yeah. So I believe their target demographics is, it is going to be rentals, and they're going to be townhomes.
Okay.
And they're, they're looking at market value?
For that particular area? I mean, they're going to be market value in comparison to the area, the demographic, demographic area that they're going to put them in?
I'd say market value for Xenia present day, in terms of the current market, and that's probably a little more upscale than what you would normally have seen in the past.
Yeah.
And I don't know, Brian, can I ask you to comment on that?
I mean, it's great, I mean, I'm not, I'm not knocking the project down. I'm for anything that's going to develop Xenia. I just want to make sure that.
Can we just give a quick overview of what we think? I don't want to get too detailed, because I think it'll be, there'll be, there's some additional planning that goes into this, but you know, you're looking at market right two-story townhomes, so this is a far and away an improvement in terms of the marketplace in the area, the current use of the property in the area. This, of course, has been an iterative process at this particular site for darn near 20 years, where a lot of stops and starts have occurred with conversations here. So, yeah, I think you can expect a general improvement. There's no real cost to the city in this, it's, there's no infrastructure cost, you know, to us, because it'll be a private, private development.
Yeah. So I'd say, if you want to think of, I don't know what Deer Creek is now.
Similar to Deer Creek.
Similar to Deer Creek.
Similar to Deer Creek?
Yeah.
Okay. So, but it won't, as far as rental, I guess, agreements and things like that, it will, it will not be, I shouldn't say this, but I didn't want to say it, is it going to be available to Section 8, you know, a little income? What you got here? Because you, you know, you're, you're in a blight area anyway, so.
My, my, my sense is, and just having done a lot of work with folks on Section 8, most, most of them, Deer Creek isn't available to them.
Right, it isn't, yeah.
Right. And so something along that line probably would not be there, right?
Okay, okay, okay. So I guess, you know, as far as the, you know, the process of how this goes, and I'm not familiar with it, but I'm getting myself familiar with it, is that I guess this is open for discussion, and then it's going to be voted on when?
Tonight.
Tonight.
As soon as, as soon as we get done with the public hearing.
And you don't have anybody here that's representing this company that's building these condos?
Yeah. So it went through.
They already did.
Yeah, they did at our, at our planning and zoning meetings. The process is it comes to planning and zoning first, and that's where the builder brings in the information on that. We also have a public hearing there, they had a public hearing there, planning zoning on this, and then at that point, the planning.
And I just want to really, you know, this undertones here with me, and that is because this area is considered, you know, blight, you know? And so when you apply for grants, that's, it comes up, that area. So this can affect your area that you're in. So when I'm applying for grants, I come up as in that target area.
Right.
You know, that, that makes documents eligible for grants. This will take away from that, I know it will. But that's not my concern right now, I guess, you know, if it's going to make an improvement on the city, that's fine, but I just want to let you know where I was coming from, you know? We look at the overall process of the growth of Xenia, and we want it to grow, which I think it is growing, but also I have an invested interest in the people who cannot afford housing like this, you know, in, in that area, in my program. You guys know me.
Yep.
You want to comment?
Yeah. So, and, yeah, Councilman Scrivens, do you want to comment?
Thank you, Mr. President. When you look at Exhibit A and Exhibit B, referencing your specific existing structure, Exhibit A is far and away the better one for you, because it removes a 10-unit structure right in front of the building and puts it on the side of the building. Therefore, it gives you a lot more visibility.
Right, I was looking at that, yeah.
If your neighbor says it's a parking lot and a green space before, but there's still no immediate access to your building. So you may want to see if we can amend the plan to have an apron put in to access your parking area.
Yeah, I saw this, you know, because I'm trying to figure out how, how are we going to access, I mean, there's a, there is a driveway behind the building.
That's what I'm saying, so.
But how, you know.
So a part, an entry apron on Dayton Avenue going to your specific parking area will not only give you access, but the parking area in front of you will open it up for visibility.
Yeah. Well, that'll be on Miami Valley Community Action, you know, and.
And I recommend is, it'd be good to get together with, with Brian from our, our planning and zoning division, and he, I'm sure he'd take whatever time he needs to go over any specifics on the, on Brian's fair statement.
And this is, I know this is going to be built regardless, I'm not worried about that, I'm just protecting.
Well, at least you can get an apron, an entry to your.
I want to know where I'm coming from with it, when it comes to this building, and I've been over there for years, so I know what's over there.
Right, right.
So, okay, no problem. I just want to make sure you weren't tearing down our building.
No, it's not.
That's how I'm here for. I don't care what you build there, honestly, I just don't want the building to worry me out, okay? Okay, okay, no problem. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Any other public comments here? All right, I'm going to call the public hearing closed. This was introduced, as I said last meeting, by Councilman Scrivens, would you like to?
Mr. President, I'd like to move for passage.
Okay, do I have a second on that?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a second from Councilman Dean. Other comments or discussion from council at this time?
Mr. President?
Yes, Councilman Scrivens.
This will be a major change in the housing that's available, not only in Xenia, but in, but in that particular area, Dayton Avenue. That, as city manager's alluded to, this, this land has been vacant for quite some time, now to be put into its highest and best use. So with that, I yield thanks, thank you.
Sure.
And, Councilperson, I'll interject. We had this came, this similar development was presented about six years ago, I think, to council, and it did not come to fruition. But at that time, I talked to the principal of Cox Elementary School, which is located or adjacent to the property, and she was very welcoming to the fact that there would be possibly children that could actually walk to her school building and make it an actually a neighborhood school. So she seemed very welcoming to this, and, you know, I, I see all the time on Facebook, you know, rentals, two-bedroom rentals are going for $1,400, $1,600. Something like this is just going to help take the pressure off, because we just don't have a lot of housing like this type in our community. So I, I, I hope it does happen, and I'm sure it'll look a lot nicer than what we have right there now, which is nothing.
Great. All right, any other comments? All right, let's call the vote.
Vice President Smith?
Aye.
Councilman Scrivens?
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean?
Aye.
Councilman Brannum?
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean?
Aye.
Mayor Mays?
Aye.
President Urschel?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next item, this is also a public hearing. This is ordinance 2023-24. This is accepting the annexation of 10.103 acres of land in Xenia Township on 1164 Stevenson Road to the city of Xenia, Ohio. And at this time, we're also going to have a public hearing on this ordinance, and I'll go ahead and call that public hearing open. If you have any comments or discussion on this of the city accepting the annexation, please feel free to come forward and stand at the podium and give us your name and address, and, and we'll listen to what you have to say. Okay, at this time, I'm going to call the public hearing closed. This was introduced by Mayor Mays at our last meeting.
Thank you, sir. I'll move for passage.
Do I have a second for that?
I'll second.
Okay, seconded. Any comments or question from, from council before we vote on this? Yes, go ahead, council.
It looks like there is a typo, that bottom paragraph before the cover memo, that, that was passed on December 15th of 2022, not 2023.
Michelle, do you see where he's referencing?
On the summary, second paragraph, that's the fourth line.
Yeah, I can get that changed.
Yeah, not a big deal. Just a typo.
All right, any other comments or questions? All right, let's go ahead and call the vote then at this time.
Vice President Smith?
Aye.
Councilman Scrivens?
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean?
Aye.
Councilman Brannum?
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean?
Aye.
Mayor Mays?
Aye.
President Urschel?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Great.
I'd just like to say, I'm glad to see the city was actually able to help these residents get utilities. So thanks to staff, I know it was a little extra work there, but John.
Great. Next item under new business, we have a number of resolutions that were introduced at our last meeting, and this will be, we'll be voting on these resolutions tonight. First one is Resolution 2023-039, and this is approving the final plat and authorizing the execution of a subdivision agreement with Lynn Street Development LLC for the Lynn Street Development subdivision. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, sir. The resolution concerns this final plat approval for this undeveloped land on Lynn Street. As indicated, the Planning and Zoning Commission, from their perspective, approved the, the final plat on July 7th. The Lynn Street Development is an infill subdivision containing 13 family lots fronting on Lynn Street and a 5.5-acre private passive open space area. The development does not require any new streets, but does require the whitening of Lynn Street and installation of curbs, gutters, and sidewalk, as well as water, sanitary, sewer, and stormwater infrastructure for the connections. The property is owned R1C, one-family residential district. The Planning and Zoning Commission voted at their July 12th meeting to recommend approval of this final plat to council, and staff this evening is recommending approval of the resolution.
Great, thank you. Do I have a motion?
It's moved.
Moved by the mayor, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Councilwoman Dean. Any comments or observations from council before we vote?
Mr. President?
Yes, Councilman Scrivens.
Are these vacant lots for custom construction, or are these a planned unit development type of?
I can't speak to the construction type per se. I don't know what presentation's been offered from the developer for that, but it is presently an undeated, undeveloped vacant lot. To be honest, Councilman, if you would have told me five years ago that we'd see this development, I'm not sure I would have believed you. So it's, it's testimony to the nature of the demand in the community and opportunities presented. So this is, actually, I think staff's pretty excited about this nature of infill redevelopment, where there's not a lot of additional construction cost or infrastructure cost, so very unique opportunity here.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. President.
Sure. Any other comments or questions? Okay, let's call the vote.
Vice President Smith?
Aye.
Councilman Scrivens?
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean?
Aye.
Councilman Brannum?
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean?
Aye.
Mayor Mays?
Aye.
President Urschel?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next item is Resolution 2023-040, and this is awarding the bid and authorizing the execution of a contract with Moody's of Dayton Inc. for the wells number five and six redevelopment project. Mr. State Manager.
Thank you, sir. Council, we'll recall that our water treatment division maintains a best practice of regularly cleaning and redeveloping production water wells. We do this on about a five or six-year rotational basis. These efforts promote the restoration of lost well capacity, identify any major repair needs before they become significant costly needs, and address corrosion of the well springs. In addition to seeking proposals to clean and redevelop the two wells, prospective bidders were asked to submit cost proposals to replace pump motor, various other parts for each well on an as-needed basis, depending on what might be found with those respective assessments. On July 20th, the city received three bids from qualified vendors to rehabilitate these wells. Moody's of Dayton Incorporated was a low bidder. This firm has completed similar projects for us and other Miami Valley communities, and so we feel confident in making a recommendation that council authorize the resolution to award the bid to Moody's of Dayton in an amount not to exceed $78,890.
Great, thank you. Do I have a motion here?
Senator.
Moved by Councilman Branham. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second from Councilwoman Dean. Any comments or observations from council before we vote? All right, let's call the vote.
Vice President Smith?
Aye.
Councilman Scrivens?
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean?
Aye.
Councilman Branham?
Aye.
Councilman Dean?
Aye.
Mayor Mays?
Aye.
President Urschel?
Aye.
Motion carries?
Next item is Resolution 2023-041, authorizing the execution of an LPA agreement with ODOT for US 42 from Industrial Boulevard to the city corporation limit at the US 35 interchange. This is a resurfacing project. Mr. City Manager.
Yeah, thank you, sir. Just wanna, as I get started with this, our next three items are testimony to the efficacy and the efforts of our engineering staff to find resources to help deal with our street issue locally. So I just wanna give them some acknowledgement on the front end of these three. They do a great job. They're in it for the right reasons to help our community out. So with that being said, the staff did previously apply for, and we were awarded a federal urban resurfacing funds grant through the Ohio Department of Transportation. This is to rehabilitate US 42 from Industrial Boulevard to our city corporate limit at the US 35 interchange. This funding program administered through ODOT specifies a 50/50 funding split for asphalt resurfacing of eligible roadways. The 2024 CIP includes $429,000 for each the federal and local shares of this project, for a total of $858,000 for this repaving. Unfortunately, since the original application was submitted, we've seen pretty significant cost increases due to the inflation that we are all feeling. So it is, as a result, quite likely that additional funds may be required as we would move forward formal bid solicitation early next year. So we may need to come back to council for an adjustment of these numbers, just based on what we are likely to see next year. The city will be letting the bids and overseeing construction of this particular improvement project. ODOT does require that city council take action in form of resolution to authorize the, what we call LPA, the local agreement, to commit to the project. As such, we are recommending consideration of Resolution 2023-41 tonight. Ask for your authorization so we can get this in the queue.
Great, thank you. Do I have a motion?
Senator.
Moved by Councilman Branham. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Councilman Smith. Any comments or discussion from council?
Mr. President.
Yes. Councilman Scrivens, go ahead.
Thank you. Mr. Engineer, could you come forward, please? This is US 42 South within the city limits of Zinyo, running from Industrial to 35 interchange.
Correct.
I'm all good with the resurfacing of the roadway, but the pedestrian walkway needs much improvement. I see people walking with the baby carriage with the one-wheel on a little pathway, on a mighty small shoulder, and I want you to take a serious look at that before we make any improvements to the roadway.
This grant is, as the city manager said, this is-
I understand it's specific for the roadway.
Correct.
But I want you to take a look at pedestrian walkway to add at least a caveat or an asterisk to this, so we'll know that that walkway needs improvement.
And I'll be happy to look at that, but A, we're at stage three design plans with ODOT already.
I understand.
And number two-
Just put an asterisk beside it.
That would be, that would be 100% on the city to pay for that.
Exactly.
So, and as the city manager just said, we would have, we're probably gonna have to come back from appropriation when they let this project.
Full of sublimity, of course.
So that's even more money, and the sidewalk, remember that, too. That's gonna come out of general cap. That's, so, which-
That's why I'm bringing you forward, so we'll let the people know what it's gonna cost to make that improvement. We need that improvement not only on 42 South, but on US 42 North, from the circle to the city limits. So just have that in the back of your mind when we do this, and just put a little asterisk when we start to make an actual improvements. Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. President.
Tommy, you really, I'm just asking some questions here.
Please.
Because I do travel that a lot.
Please.
Do you really think, I have personally not-
Not a resident?
You never walked that.
No, I've never walked that, but I've also never seen anybody walking that.
No, you're not there to see it.
I need to see it some more.
Right.
But do you really believe we have that much foot traffic on there?
There's a lot of people that walk from the downtown specific area to the service area on Leadbetter Road. That's their only option.
Right. Well, most of my experience has been that people will just take South Detroit Street from downtown and come down to Leadbetter, where there is sidewalk that whole route.
I am not equivocated. I'm just making the observation.
Okay. All right, sure. Thanks. Any other comments or discussion from council?
If I could have a rejoinder.
Sure, yeah, yeah, go ahead, please.
Just on the news today, Miami Township in Montgomery County just received a pedestrian walkway grant for 1.5 million or something or another. We need to follow that model.
Sure.
Thank you, sir.
No, I understand the concern on 42 North and that residential area there, because there is no other way, and we've got concerns over the bridge over Second Street or Upper Bel Brook, you know, as people try and walk over to that area. I just was not really all that familiar with people trying to do a pedestrian walk on 42 South. And I understand everything, you know, the-
Well, there's a path there, and it's not an animal path, I can guarantee.
Okay. Well, I wanna go, come drive it. I'll come walk it with you.
Or bring your bicycle.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Come, I wanna go see that, okay? All right, great.
Thank you, sir.
Sure.
Thank you, Mr. Engineer.
Any other comments or discussion before we?
Yeah, I-
Yeah, go ahead, Brent.
I just feel compelled to answer a little bit. You know, we can certainly evaluate if that's will of council. I've been with the city for 16-plus years. I've never heard of complaint or request for sidewalk in this particular area. It's a split roadway, so it's not really designed, and there's no residential facing this stretch of roadway. So it falls completely outside of the policy bounds that we typically adhere to. I'll concede 42 North is a problem area. It is one of multiple problem areas where we do not have good pedestrian access. But even there, 42 North, that small stretch of road from the circle on out to the corp limit, we've done an evaluation of what the cost would be, I think, two to three years ago. It was seven figures. It was in excess of a million dollars to put sidewalk on that small stretch of road. So these are not trivial, inexpensive projects. We never wanna have to compromise with pedestrian safety, of course. We do have to balance demand and use, you know, practical value with the financial impact. So it's, again, something we can evaluate, but I just highly doubt there would be grant programs available to us for this type of a project.
I'll have to refer the city manager to the news article.
Again, there are, I apologize. We'd have to look at what program that is, because these grant programs have qualifying criteria. Again, not knowing what that is, I just, you know, we can take a look. I just, and even if there's grant money available, as you'll see with these items tonight, the match is gonna vary between local, between 20 and 50% typically. So you're talking considerable resources, and these are resources that would be coming out of your general capital fund. So every foot of concrete is a little less curb, it's a little less asphalt, so.
Sure. So, just so we're all clear, the resolution we're voting on tonight-
It's just the roadway.
It's just the roadway. And I guess, Tommy, what I'd ask is, let's go to our Public Utility Committee and have some more discussions about that there. Does that make sense?
Sound good.
Good, okay.
Thank you, sir.
Sure. And let's go take a walk or a bike ride. I wanna see that some more, okay?
Call the vote.
All right, let's call the vote.
Vice President Smith?
Aye.
Councilman Scrivens?
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean?
Aye.
Councilman Branham?
Aye.
Councilman Dean?
Aye.
Mayor Mays?
Aye.
President Urschel?
Aye.
Motion carries?
Next item is Resolution 2023-042, authorizing the execution of an LPA agreement with ODOT for the East Market Street from North Detroit Street to North Columbus Street resurfacing project. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, sir. In October of 2021, the city also applied for and was awarded a Surface Transportation Program Grant. These are funds that would be used for rehabilitation of East Market Street from North Detroit Street to North Columbus Street. This particular grant award amount was $411,114, which is about 2/3 of the total project cost. The other 3rd, our local share, totals $229,896.71 for a project total cost of $641,017.11. As mentioned with our last item, we've experienced a lot of inflation, so this will impact these numbers undoubtedly as well. So we just, again, wanna remind council that these are numbers that may be subject to some additional local resources as we would get numbers back in January. Upon receiving bids for the project, the project will be led by the city, will be overseeing construction of this particular project, and we're very excited to see this project move forward, because this is a roadway. It's pretty prominent here in our downtown and is in desperate need of rehabilitation. So staff's recommending Resolution 2023-42. Again, ODOT requires these LPA agreements to demonstrate local commitment to the project, and so recommending execution of that agreement through the resolution of approval to the signal.
Great, thank you. Do I have a motion? Moved by Councilwoman Dean. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Councilman Branham. Any comments or discussion here before we vote? Mayor, is this on your street? Who lives there on this street?
I have been advised by our law director that I am allowed to vote tonight. Okay, so if there's any questions, I haven't-
Just wanted to get that out there before you voted.
That's just fine, that I have been advised that it does not increase or decrease my home value, my property value, and that it benefits all residents, not just particular all citizens.
Not just your vehicle?
Correct.
Okay, got it.
I have been given blessing that I'm allowed to vote.
Your scooter.
It will help my scooter, I won't lie.
Will help your scooter. You may go faster on your scooter.
But I did ask to make sure that I am, I am-
Wouldn't have a conflict.
So I can abstain if people feel like that is a conflict, but I did speak to my law director. If you have anything in, you go right ahead, Tommy.
We didn't have Councilman Branham abstain when we paved all the roads leading to his house.
That's how many people I've talked to.
Nope, nope, okay.
I will say-
But I did get legal advice to make sure that this is, to see if there's a conflict.
Just for people's respekts, between just the two resolutions tonight, the local match funds is $659,000.
Yes.
So, you know, I mean, in the past, the city had said, hey, we'll allocate $500,000 to roadways, which we've been exceeding that by over double for multiple years in a row. But just know that only those two stretches is $659,000 in our 2024 CIP.
Good observation.
No, that's true. And so we're able to get, we have available to us the matching grants for thoroughfares and thruways, and good on our staff for working hard. And once again, I just commend you guys for, this isn't, putting these things in and planning these towns, this is a multi-year project, to get these things submitted, planned, making sure we have our matching funds ready, and doing those kind of things. So thanks so much, you guys, for the hard work on doing it, because literally, we are, in the next one we go on, we are matching our entire road budget here with these matching grants. So, yeah, great. Okay. Mayor, I just recommend that you do go ahead and abstain.
Happy to.
Just so no one, no one has any ill intent there. I don't think we do, but-
Cody did abstain.
That's right.
That's fine, I did-
Market beats other streets.
That's right.
Come on.
All right.
It's not like you're the only street on that, only house on the street.
Yes, yeah, Councilman Scrivens, go ahead.
Just for the people to note that this process was started in October of 2021, and construction won't even be until 2024.
Four, right.
So, nothing moves fast in local government. Please know that. Thank you.
Well, I'll caveat, nothing moves fast when you're collaborating with state government. This helps us a lot, so. All right, let's go ahead and call the vote.
Vice President Smith?
Aye.
Councilman Scrivens?
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean?
Aye.
Councilman Branham?
Aye.
Councilman Dean?
Aye.
Mayor Mays?
I'll abstain.
Abstain.
President Urschel?
Aye.
Motion carries?
Motion carries, thank you. And we're happy for all the residents on the street to get something new paved there. It's wonderful.
From curb to curb.
Yep. All right, next item, Resolution 2023-043, authorizing the execution of an LPA agreement with ODOT for the West Main Street from Orange Street to Church Street, and this is a resurfacing project. Mr. City Manager.
Let's do one more, shall we? October of 2022, our staff applied for, and we have been awarded a Surface Transportation Program Grant through NVRPC. As indicated, this would be for West Main Street from Orange Street to Church Street. In addition to rehabilitation of this section of roadway, the work includes the repair and replacement of ADA ramps in various sections of curb, sidewalk, and driveway aprons that's necessary as a compliance requirement for approval of the grant. The awarded grant amount was for $678,653, 69% of the total share. The other 31% is a local match of $304,903. Project total cost of just shy of a million dollars, $893,000. Construction of these improvements is slated to start in 2028. Staff's excited about this, because we think this will be a nice enhancement on top of the projects that are forthcoming at our town square, formerly known as Town Square. This evening, we're presenting another resolution to authorize execution of the LPA, which, again, is a condition of ODOT. So on this particular project, staff will be letting the bids and overseeing construction of the improvements. So, again, that'll be part of our local requirement here to execute this project in 2028. So unless council's approval to move forward.
Great, thank you. Sure, go ahead, Councilman Smith, go ahead.
With inflation, as our local match might fluctuate-
Absolutely.
Does the grant fluctuate?
Depends on the grants, but typically, no, the amounts are set, correct, Mr. Engineer? I think one or two of them, there may be some adjustment, but.
To answer your question, you're both right there. We have, because of the economy here, with the COVID, NVRPC has gotten more money through the feds, federal highway, to get back to projects that are now underfunded, so to speak. So it's potential that that could happen to 2028 construction project.
Plus, it's probably five years out.
But-
That could be double.
Well, and the reason for that is, is the ADA ramps are not done. In order to get, and the fast-track projects right there, which are two years up, kinda like we just talked about with Market Street, that's why we did the ADA ramps earlier this year, so it'd be done. So we just decided, you know, we can, and we didn't really wanna force this, as the city manager said, because of what's gonna be happening right up the street from there. It'll be a nice compliment once all the work's done. So, but to answer your question, it's potential, it would be back, we'd go back through NVRPC to do a revised treatment.
Sure. I'm sure in five years, that's gonna need resurfacing anyways.
Any other comments, questions? All right, let's call the vote.
Vice President Smith?
Aye.
Councilman Scrivens?
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean?
Aye.
Councilman Branham?
Aye.
Councilman Dean?
Aye.
Mayor Mays?
Aye.
President Urschel?
Aye.
Well, there we go. There's the hangup.
Yeah. I was wondering why they were hesitation.
Nobody did.
I was writing before.
Let's get a motion here first.
So moved.
So moved by Councilman Scrivens. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by the mayor.
Shall I call the roll?
Let's call the roll again.
Vice President Smith?
Aye.
Councilman Scrivens?
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean?
Aye.
Councilman Branham?
Aye.
Councilman Dean?
Aye.
Mayor Mays?
Aye.
You're not gonna abstain?
Abstain.
Okay, aye.
Now I carry.
We're gonna do this?
No, this is West Main.
On TV?
He's just pulling the money.
Now let's go to another resolution. That's when it gets good. That we're all in favor of. Resolution 2023-044, determining that 774 Cincinnati Avenue is not needed for any municipal purpose. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, sir. City Council previously approved ordinance 2023-19. This accepted the property at 774 Cincinnati Avenue from the Green County Board of Commissioners. That was the intent that the property would later be reverted back to the Fish Food Pantry for their permanent use. Per Section 4.01G2 of the city's charter, a resolution declaring that the property is not needed for any municipal purpose is required. That would be the next step in this process. Resolution 2023-44 would so signify this with your approval. So we request this this evening. Upon doing so, we would come back with the last piece of legislation, which would be authorizing the transfer of that property.
Great. Do I have a motion? Moved by the mayor. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Councilman Dean. Comments or discussion from the council? Go ahead, say it. This is a great, this is a great thing.
It is very impressive. I love it.
And good on county commissioners to donate the land, and good on our staff to work the process to get this over to the Fish Pantry. And I'll tell you, I drove by there today, and they were, they were packed out with folks needing help, and they do it with just grace with everybody. I mean, you feel like you have dignity when you go to our Fish Pantry. You really do. And you feel like people care for you, because they do. People do care for you. So, that's great. Well, let's go ahead and call the vote.
Vice President Smith?
Aye.
Councilman Scrivens?
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean?
Aye.
Councilman Branham?
Aye.
Councilman Dean?
Aye.
Mayor Mays?
Aye. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I apologize.
President Urschel?
Aye.
Motion carries?
Okay, that ends our resolution ordinances for this evening. Now we're gonna go to to appointed officials reports. Mr. Finance Director?
Thank you, Council President. I sent out, just before the meeting here, earlier, this afternoon, the financial report for the end of July. So, we're seven months through the year, a little more than halfway through the year, and things are, are trending in a fairly good direction. I encourage you to take a look at that report. I know most of you probably haven't had a chance to, to look it over just yet, but I encourage you to take a look over that. And if you have any questions, please reach out to me and let me know. But that's all I have this evening.
Great. Any questions for the finance director? Thanks, Ryan. Mr. City Manager?
I believe I have dominated enough time tonight. Nothing further.
Any questions for our city manager? I just, I just want to commend Brent, you know, coming off your surgery two weeks ago to be with us. And then we had our, our council all-day working session, multiple brand-new interfaces with other organizations that we approved by the council, and those, those were all done spotlessly. I mean, just great. And I know you've been in pain through all this time. Mostly physical, maybe a little bit of mental.
Yeah. Some might say torture.
That's right. That's right. But, and you know what? You could have asked us to waive those things off, okay? But you didn't do that. So, I just really appreciate that. So, thank you for.
Appreciate saying so. And we will have some updates on the various conversations we've had at our next council meeting with our roundtable. Lots of updates on lots of projects here in two weeks. So, stay tuned.
Yeah. Good, good deal. Thank you. All right. Any, okay, that's appointed officials reports. Let's go to council comments and reports. Let's start with Councilwoman Dean.
Not bad.
Councilman Branham?
Thanks for all the city staff that helped out last Saturday and made that retreat a success. Michelle, you know, put in a lot of time the night before and provided us a really good piece. So, appreciate that.
Yeah. Great. Councilman Scrivens?
Thank you, Mr. President. First, I want to say condolences to our fire chief on the loss of his mother. And we sincerely share your grief, but we, we know that God never makes a mistake. So, I wasn't able to attend the service. I had a doctor's appointment that day, but just wanted to say, chief, God bless you, sir. Stay strong. Also condolences to the family of Reverend Anderson. I think he's about 97 or 98, and he went home to be with the Lord here a couple of days ago. And I think Pastor Chapman's going to officially his home gone.
Right.
Thanks again to our city clerk, and of course, to each of you guys for having such a good retreat. When we come to you in public, we've already made sausage. And making sausage is not easy. We all have different opinions, but we all come to a conclusion that we think is best for the city. So, we want to thank the city manager for spearheading our retreat, and of course, all the other appointed officials who attended, but especially to our city clerk, who works tirelessly behind the scenes to make everything go flawlessly. So, with that, Mr. President, I yield back. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Councilman Dean?
Thank you, Mr. President. Don't have anything else to add today.
Vice President Smith?
All right. Thank you. So, Tini Community Schools, congratulations on the new stadium. It's coming up. And I know their target date's next week, because they've got a big game.
Yeah. Tell us what's that game?
Thursday Night Lights.
Battle of the Backyards.
First game.
First game against Beaver Creek.
The backyard brawl.
Right.
Yeah. So, they're hoping to have that at home. And home stands are, I think, almost completed, and the away stands are close. So, I saw yesterday pouring some asphalt around the home stadium. And so, it'd be really nice when that's done. I think that's just a, a beautiful facility. So, congratulations to them. Just a reminder that school opens up next week for most of our schools, Career Center, Xenia Community Schools. So, just be careful and cognizant of kids jumping on the bus and off the buses. And, you know, I just, we're, our, our city's committed to safety of our, of our children in the schools. So, I just can't thank our police department and our resource officers for the diligent job that they do on a daily basis. So, thank you so much for that. Last night, I, I got to chair quite lengthy planning and zoning commission meeting. And I'd like to thank our city planner, Mr. Fortchner. We had one item that we spent close to hour and a half, hour and 45 minutes discussing with citizens. We had quite a roomful yesterday, probably had nine or 10 people come up and speak. I just want everyone to know, you're always welcome to attend a meeting. You might not agree, and you might have questions. And I felt last night, when everybody left, that they had their questions answered as close as we could, because this is just a concept plan right now. It's not a final drawing. This was on 190 acres of a residential development known as Highland Green, and that will be at US 42 and Stevenson Road. And it does add a lot of homes in our northeastern area of the city. And that had a PUD approved back in 2004. That did not come to fruition. The developer had a great presentation again last night, answered a lot of questions. So, again, I'd like to thank the, the commission, because it was quite lengthy meeting, and they all kind of stuck through it. And so, our next meeting will be on Wednesday, September 13th, 2023. Also, I'd like to thank Mr. Fortchner on the next plan update. And there is a quite detailed report on the city's website, and you can view that if you have any questions regarding that next plan. I know there's been a lot of citizen input on that, and I appreciate all those that are involved in that. So, that's all I have. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. And a mayor?
Thank you. Calendar for the last two weeks, on Saturday, July 29th, participated in Impact Xenia's board meeting. Be more to come on that, but looking at what Josh Tramick is doing, Tammy, with Living Well Clinic, and working with our fire chief, our police chief, and our sheriff. So, a lot of good things happening with that. Fair Week, had an opportunity to go out to the fair. I just wanted to congratulate the 4-H participants in all their, all their showings and ribbons, and had a lot of fun looking at the animals and seeing what they did. On August 1st was XREC, the board, the committee that I chair. We'll have a report on that in two weeks. I think that's a meeting, talked about some things with the tree committee, the Heritage Tree Project. So, more to come with that. August 2nd, met with Representative Dean, and I'm assuming you're going to talk a little bit about that. On the 3rd was NVRPC. Not too much to report on that. Attended, they just had some updates of some, nothing that really applied to us right now. So, on the 4th, attended upon the invitation of Fairborn's mayor, and he invited us to come out for the Bluegrass and Brew. That's kind of their signature event. But we went, Joe Mullins and the Radio Reablers were there, and that was a lot of fun to, to show that support to, to Joe Mullins. On the 5th, we, of course, had our all-day council retreat. On the 8th, the Association of Churches, we met and reviewed a little bit of their involvement for the red, white, and blue block party, and had an opportunity to thank them in person for their participation. On the 8th, we met with Senator Hackett, myself and Councilman Urschel. And then on the 9th, had an opportunity to sit down to lunch with some residents who are a part of Friends of Xenia Station, cycling group that does a lot here with Bill and Carol Sykes and the work they do here. So, I think that about covers it.
Great. Thank you. Thank you for the time you put in to all these activities and stuff. So, and you do a great job representing us seriously, just very well.
Ditto, ditto.
We, we've changed our time from our council treat. Normally, we do that in the January timeframe. We moved that into this month because we wanted to be able to impact planning for next year's budget CIP, and also other roadway items, and, and looking into the election timeframe, too. So, I just want to thank all the council for setting your time. We also extended that. We were there for a good chunk of the day, and thank you for the staff supporting that. I think it was a really productive time to go through a number of issues, and we'll be discussing those in the, in the weeks here to, to come as well, too. Home games, the Xenia schools, they are going to be packed out this year. They just are. And that's a great thing. And I just appreciate it to Nathan, who's the athletic director there, who's reached out to us with the city, and they're planning on using the town square parking during the games. They're going to advertise that. They're going to provide some shuttle buses back and forth. And, and I think that will just help alleviate some of the tension of people parking off roads and places they shouldn't be parking necessarily. So, so good on them. And I'm glad, I told them we had that available this fall, probably not available next year.
Five home games.
Yeah, five home games. And starting next, starting next Thursday. So, the first one's on Thursday, not a Friday. That should be a wonderful time. And, and kudos to the, to the school, not only for the physical arrangement, but also the work they've been doing with the teams there as well, too. We had earlier asked to have a smaller group of us approved by the council do some formal meetings with our state representatives. And we, Brent, thanks for getting those scheduled with us. We had a, a meeting with Representative Dean and also Senator Hackett, and we went over six specific areas of things, of concern that we had from the city that were, we felt like state, state initiatives and state, state oversight had, had a lot of impact on us here at the city level. So, I just felt really good that we had an opportunity to speak directly to our representatives from a municipal perspective. And I think we'll, we'll continue on doing that. We'll have some more in our next work session, be able to go over some of those items. We also had asked for a smaller subset of us to meet with the school as well, too. And so, we had our first meeting of that with their school administrator, Gabe Lofton. I just want to appreciate Gabe's time to meet with us, and great representation from our staff. And Levi and I, Tommy went to that one. And just, once again, we had four or five things that we just wanted to bring up with the schools to start our discussions. And Brent and I've talked, we want to be doing this on a quarterly basis. So, I've been formally been going to school board meetings, but this is our formal representation into that as well. We've also have approved the mayor and I to be representatives with, with the municipal court judge and have discussions. And we've had multiple ones of those so far, and it's been very productive. And once again, we're planning on continuing doing that. And Brent, we just want to get another one scheduled now with, with our senior staff, with him and, and his staff as well, too, to go over some more specific things. But that's just been going really well. So, you know, I think we've stepped out to, to have the council be stepping up to have representative across multiple venues. Tommy and I have informally been going to county commissioner meetings and attending those. And at our next work session, I want to talk about us having someone set up, once again, to, to have a formal interface with the commissioners. We can either ask to have some time on their, their work sessions, which they have every week there. If it's an informal one, we, we can only meet with one of them, because two, two makes a quorum at that point. But we'll talk about what we want. But I think it's time for us to start interfacing. And the reason we do this is a lot of times, in those forums, other people speak for us, and they say, this is what the city's position is, and it's much better for the city to represent what the city's position versus having somebody else represent that for us. And I found that's been much more productive when we, as council, go and make that representation to them. So, anyways, that's been great. Thank you, folks, who've been part of those teams to let us be part of that. And we're just going to continue doing that. I think that's going to continue to help us as well. I have here a copy of the original deed of transfer of the property of the armory from the city of Xenia to the state of Ohio. That was dated 1929. And I went and saw Michelle today and challenged her to get some information of when we passed the ordinance, and she came right back with the minutes of the meeting from July 27th, 1929, where the city of Xenia appropriated $5,000 to purchase 12 parcels and to fund the water sewer to connect to that building, and then deeded over at no cost to the state of Ohio. So, I just want to let you know, we have that information now. And I, we went further to see if we could get the actual ordinance that was passed, and we had to go to the.
The archive.
The archive, folks. But we may be able to even get the actual ordinance that was passed there. So, anyways, I know we had some discussion with the state about that property, but at least we have the basis of the expense of the city to provide that. And what was interesting was that the state of Ohio had appropriated $50,000 for the construction of a, of the armory. But the condition was, was that the municipality would provide gratis the, the land and the infrastructure associated with that, which the city did at that time. So, yeah. So, anyways, I, I'll tell you, I got to thank our county records folks, who I walked in and said, what do you think? And I'll tell you, within half an hour.
They found it.
They had found this original copy of that deed, which was remarkable, knowing all of the, the travails that have gone through in terms of natural disasters and tornadoes and other things, that they actually have those records there. So, good on them. You know, that was, and I just want to thank the county folks, too, for taking time out to, to help us with that. And the reason I'm bringing that up is, as the, you know, as the state is no longer using that as an armory for the National Guard, there's, has been some discussion about, is there any interest from the city perspective? But at least I think we have the, the background information on that. Last item is on August 20th, 10, 10:30, at Shawnee Park. We're going to have, there's going to be a community worship time. And this will be our second annual community worship. We had it last year. We had 12 churches from all different denominations here in the city came together for a time of worship. And all 12 of those churches shut their doors at their specific location and said, let's come together at Shawnee Park. And so, right now, we have 14 churches in the municipality or in the township around us signed up right now. So, I would just encourage anyone, and I'm not trying to draw you away from your, from your own, your own home church, but I'll tell you, it, it is amazing to have a community coming together and worshiping God together. And it was a real blessing for all of us last year. I want to commend Chaz, Pastor Chaz, at Home Church. He had the vision for this last year and got it all going. And he's worked really hard this year to continue to, to make it happen and stuff. So, thank you so much for, for Chaz and his crew, as they've been stepping up for that. And, and yeah, Mayor, go ahead.
When you said Pastor Chaz, I told him I would say this tonight. His church, Home Church, is offering free haircuts to students and new kids that are going back to school on Saturday from 2:00 to 5:00.
All right. That's great. Yep. Yep.
He said stylists and barbers.
Yeah. Yeah. And I also want to condemn, I also want to just commend, Xenia Naz Ring had a, a free backpack giveaway two, two days ago. And also, the folks at Faith Community in the morning was Faith Community, and the evening was Xenia Naz. And just their willingness to come alongside families here in our city and, and help out with that. That's, that's a big deal every year when families are struggling, have that, that list of things. And just to be able to go and get a backpack that's got all the stuff that your kid needs is just, just amazing. So, so kudos so much for those two churches. So, yeah. And I'll tell you, we are blessed to be in a, in a city that I think, like Brent said, we are busy, but we're all busy on good things, right? 1,400 housing, housing, individual houses or townhomes are, are going to be built in the next five years. And that's even before we get the influx from the, from the battery plant out of Jeffersonville. I mean, most of these were already in progress prior to that announcement, and even more to come. It was interesting, I was over at the commissioners' meeting, they had, they had a group that was interested in part of the, there's a yin yang to this, that was interested in some of the land over in the industrial innovation way over there. And they're going to turn them down, not because, but, but their sense was, there's a, there's going to be, because of what's going on in the battery plant, there's going to be a lot better customer. So, they're, actually, they found a different parcel for them, not right there in that prime, prime territory. And they found another piece of, of county property that's within the lens to probably suit them. But I, I think there's just a sense with, with the battery plant coming, there's going to be a lot of opportunity for things to be coming our direction as well.
Boom.
Yeah, just, just wonderful stuff. So, so thank you for all, all the work, Chris, all your guys are doing, and Brian, all your crew is doing at this point, too. And I think it's going to be important for us to get that formal interface with the, with the commissioners, so we can, we can be speaking directly to them, because we're going to have more and more things for us to be doing collaboration. We'll, we'll talk some more about that in our next work session. All right, that's all I had at this time. Do I have a, a motion for adjournment?
I'm moved.
Moved by the mayor, second? Second by Councilwoman. Yes, we do not have a need for an executive session. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah. And I, let me just, before we vote on that, Donette isn't with us tonight, and she's hurting. And when you have a, a pet in your house that's been there for a long time, they just get to be part of your family. And so, she had a member of her, her, her family from one of her, one of her pets passed away, and that just, it, it, it hurt her a lot. So, anyways, told her, take some time off to grieve and, and get your arrangements. And, and it's, so anyways, I just encourage you guys, maybe just to drop her a note. Donette works really hard for all of us, and she does not lightly step out of things. But she, she was pretty shook up today. So, I just want, want to pass that on. And let's remember her in our, in our prayers. And, and if you think about it, just, just drop her a note and say, Donette, hey, we're, we're feeling for you as well.
Same with Chief.
Sure. Yeah. And for, and for the chief as well. And I thank you so much for the mayor going and, and representing us as council that day. And, and thank you so much for doing that for us, too. Yeah. All right, let's go ahead and call a vote.
Vice President Ziff?
Aye.
Councilman Scrivens?